Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 11th Planning Board meeting. Do salute to the flag. Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, also known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2024 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk posted on the township website and available at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. Application documents, plans have been made available on the township's website. And at least 10 days in advance of the meeting, complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Department for inspection in accordance with public meeting with the public meeting notice. Can I have a roll call of our board and all professionals, please?
Chair Serraci, Mr. Vanderle, and Mr. Debar absent, Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Radowitz.
Here.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Vitale.
Here.
Committeeman Lapone.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Here.
Vice Chair Peasen.
Here.
Mr. Coice.
Present.
Mr. Brinkstein.
Here.
Mr. Mayhew.
Here.
And myself and the videographer are here.
Thank you. Moving on to consideration of meeting minutes. I hear a motion for an April 4, 2024 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members are Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, and Committeeman Lapone.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
April 11th meeting.
Thank you. Next, April 11th meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion?
Eligible members, Mr. Wagner, Ms. Smith, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli, and the acting chair.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Anybody?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Hold me. I thought you were second.
Yes.
Sorry.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peasen.
Yes. Meeting minutes of May 2nd. Do I have a motion?
Same as the last one, except I have Mr. Scoboe.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peasen.
Yes. Moving on to consideration of resolutions. First resolution is the SAI Middlesex Farms LP File 22 PB 15 MSP. Any comments from the dais or? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, and yourself.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Vice Chair Peasen.
Yes. Moving on to consideration of resolution number two, which is Specialty Assays Inc. File 23 PB 16 SPV. Do I have a motion?
Eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Mr. Vitale, Committeeman Lapone, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yeah.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yeah.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Next, number three, G&amp;J Steel and Tubing Inc. File 24 PB 01 MSPV. Do I hear a motion?
Eligible members are Mr. Radowitz, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, Committeeman Lapone, Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Moving on, consideration of resolution Somerset County Multi-Use Facility File 24 PB 02 INF.
Same members eligible as the last resolution.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Ms. Smith.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Okay, moving on, number five, Campus Associates LLC 20 PB 13 MSPV 2024 Extension Request.
Eligible members are Committeeman Lapone and Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
I'll flip a coin.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Very good. Moving along, number six, Toll Brothers Inc., RBG Enclave File 21 PB 10 S M S S P 2024 Extension. Counselor?
Wagner, Lapone, Chicorelli.
I'll move, make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Thank you. Number seven, Recommendation of Ordinance 2024-07 Revised MUID-1.
Wagner, Radowitz, Scoboe, Vitale, Lapone, Chicorelli.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
All right. Moving on to number nine, Recommendation of Ordinance 2024-09 EVSE and Make Ready Parking Spaces.
Same six.
Make the motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz.
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe.
Yes.
Mr. Vitale.
Yes.
Committeeman Lapone.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Chicorelli.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moving on, next item on the agenda, Planning Board Business. We'll have a master plan update. Mr. Coice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Turn us on. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since the Climate Change Hazard Vulnerability Assessment was adopted by the Planning Board in December of 2023, the Master Plan Subcommittee has been meeting further to update the master plan. The focus has been on developing the vision and goals and updating various master plan elements. The next part that's coming soon is the vital component of the master plan update is participation and feedback from the public. There's going to be an announcement coming at the next Township Committee meeting announcing the software that we're going to be using. And it's going to be a really, a really important part of our process is engaging the community as much as possible and to get feedback to try to make the master plan as, as the best way that we can make it for the community. There's going to be various capabilities that we're excited that it can do. It's going to come in various languages. It's going to give people lots of different opportunities to, to provide important feedback for us to then take that feedback and incorporate it, incorporate it into the master plan. It's basically going to be one-stop shopping for all the master plan updates, upcoming events, meetings, initiatives, and opportunities for the public to participate as much as possible.
Great.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No. I think it's, it's a move forward. It's, it's something that is needed and I look forward to participating in that and I look forward to the public participating in that as well.
Doesn't, does the software platform have a name?
It does. Would you like me to announce the company we're working with? I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, I was thinking more, well, the company is Public Input, but we've taken a spin on it here and, and.
Yes. Would you like to do the honors?
Yes, please do. You can do it.
Are you like, thank you. Very polite. Is this a polite off? So the platform is going to be called Engage Hillsborough.
There you go.
And the company is called Public Input. And so more, more details coming soon. There'll be a press release and an announcement and there'll be a link to the site and that's going to be where all the different information is going to be provided for the master plan and surveys and things related to.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Coice.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, business from the floor for matters not on the agenda. And as usual, refrain from any warehouse discussion. Anybody want to come forth, public for matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving along. Next on the list is consideration of ordinances. I don't believe we have any ordinances to consider. So that brings us to our, our application, Homestead Road LLC File 21 PB 25 MS, MSPV. And I will let the applicant introduce himself again.
And Mr. Vice Chair, before we begin, I need to note my continued recusal on this matter.
Thank you. Very good. Mr. Radowitz is excused.
And Mr. Vitale.
And Mr. Vitale. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. Giannetti introduces himself, I just want to put on the record, we have a certification by absent board member examination of record slash eligibility to vote. Mr. Scoboe has acknowledged that he viewed the video recording of the April 11, 2024 hearing and he is eligible to participate in this application.
Thank you, counselor. All right, Mr. Giannetti.
Yes. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board, Craig Giannetti, the law firm, Dave Pitney on behalf of the applicant, Homestead Road LLC. This is a continued application for preliminary, final, major site plan approval along with subdivision approval in connection with a proposal for two warehouses on the subject property. At the last meeting, we conducted the direct examination of our planner, Christine Cofone. And at that point, it was going to be open to the board and its professionals for questioning and then thereafter cross-examination by the public. So at this time, I'd like to call back Ms. Cofone.
Very well. And then.
I'll swear her in and then I have to put something on the record.
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Is it on? Can you hear me? Nope. How about now? Great. Name is Christine with a C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E, Cofone, C-O-F-O-N-E. Business address is 125 Half Mile Road, Suite 200, Red Bank, New Jersey, 07701.
Mr. Chairman, I want to put this on the record to hopefully get out in front of an issue that I don't think is necessarily an issue. The Township Committee is in the midst of discussions for a possible redevelopment of a property totally unrelated to the application before you this evening that is not before this board at this time. They were provided internally a copy of a proposed redevelopment plan and report with the caption prepared for the Township of Hillsborough by Ms. Cofone's consulting group received through the proposed owner's application. The Township of Hillsborough has not and did not retain the Cofone Consulting Group or Ms. Cofone individually or any of her other individuals to produce any reports whatsoever regarding a redevelopment or potential redevelopment application on another site. I wanted to get this out before it got its way out there either through public record or not, before people start wondering, oh, the township has now retained the planner for the applicant before the, and isn't that present a problem? I will ask Mr. Giannetti to put his comments on the record. But I want, a copy of the report has been provided to all the board members, to the objectors, but I want to indicate that this does not in any way, as far as I can see, conflict Ms. Cofone from providing her services to the current applicant. And she has not and is not doing work for the Township of Hillsborough. So before that rumor gets out, that was the recommendation we had provided. And I've spoken to Mr. Giannetti. I believe he has a couple of words he wants to put on the record, if at all.
I don't think there's much to be put on. Ms. Cofone was not engaged by the town. She did not work with the town on it and was prepared, she was engaged by a private property owner and was engaged by them and prepared it on their behalf.
Okay. Thank you. Proceed. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Introduce the objectors. My apologies. You start objector number one and run through the assigned numbers, please.
Good evening.
Well, I guess just, just to clarify, are there, were the board professionals having any questions or they were going to go after?
I thought we were just doing appearances.
I think at this point, Craig, it's an introduction for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't gotten, we haven't gotten to questions yet.
Good evening. Mike Passara, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute.
Scott Gross, objector number two.
Brian Tarantino, representing Stop Warehouses and Trucks.
Nobody else?
No.
Yeah. They're coming.
John and Lucy? Okay. All right. Thank you. And.
I believe we're at the point of board questions of Ms. Cofone is, and then thereafter a public questioning.
Okay. Any questions from the, the dais? And any questions from our professionals?
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Ms. Cofone, could you explain to us, maybe I kind of missed on how this application meets the vision of the master plan for that area and how did you arrive at that conclusion? And had you spoken to anybody in the township in reference to that? I guess it goes back to when the master plan was looked at at 2011. I guess you were part of that. There's, I was on Township Council at that point. The chairman was, a couple other people were, so I'm just kind of, you just expand on that for me, please?
Sure. So I, to be clear, I was not part of the rezoning when this was done. There was a master plan that was reviewed in 2010. I did review that master plan in preparation for providing my testimony. So how I came to the conclusion, you know, as planners often do, the first thing that you do when you have a site or one of the first things that you do is you look at the zoning and what the zoning allows and the enumerated permitted uses. So if the use program that is proposed by the applicant aligns with those permitted uses and are allowable, then certainly that's one indicator that the application is consistent with the vision for the area. Sometimes there's a stated purpose in the zone. That's not always the case. Sometimes there is, sometimes there's not. Even in some communities, I've seen it where some of the zones in the town will have a stated purpose, some of them won't. Here in the T E C D zone, there is a stated purpose. So I reviewed that purpose and I, I found the application to be consistent with the enumerated purpose. So when you're dealing with a permitted use in the zone that meets all of the underlying bulk criteria and is an allowable use that furthers the purpose, there is no obligation to reconcile that with the master plan. But knowing that this is, you know, a highly talented, interested project in the community, I did look at the master plan that was done in 2010 because there was very specific language in there when the zoning was put in place that talked about considered proximity to residential uses. And in the 2010 master plan, it reads, I'm going to read you from page, I believe this is page three. Although many of the uses are permitted in both of the CDZ and LI district, there are a number of uses permitted in the LI district which create potential concerns when in close proximity to residential uses, including but not limited to home improvement centers, contractor facilities, vehicle service facilities, gasoline service stations, outside manufacturing operations, private recreational complex, self-storage facilities, parking garages, and freestanding restaurants. Now, I will give you that the use says including but not limited to, but it didn't even list warehouse shipping and receiving loaded completely within an enclosed building. So it did, but, but it, what the master plan did was it raised the issue of these types of uses and proximity to residential uses. So then with that, when you look at the T E C D zone, it allows for a buffer of, I believe it's 20 feet is a buffer requirement, except that when you're next to a residential use, you have to have a buffer requirement of 100 feet. Similarly, when you're looking at the setbacks, right, the bulk criteria, you have to be setback in this zoning district. I want to say it's like 30. Hold on, I'll get you because I want to be accurate. Because it's a substantial increase for the side yard setbacks when you're dealing with a, here we go. The minimum side yard shall be 20 feet, except where adjacent to a residential zone or existing dwelling, it shall be 150 feet. So you have a master plan that contemplated these uses, recognized these uses, recognized proximity of residential uses. And then you have a zoning ordinance that followed that to implement it that increased the buffer from 20 to 100 and increased the side yard setback from 20 to 150 for uses that are adjacent to residential zones. So I know this was a really long explanation and I know that I have been cautioned to give yes or no answers when appropriate, and that was hardly a yes or no answer. But I think that the answer warranted, because your question was what informed my decision to come to the conclusion that this use is aligned with the vision for the T E C D zone. So I wanted you to have an accurate understanding of the things that I looked at and how I came to my conclusion as a planner.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Any professionals?
Well, I, I, I do have a question, though. I guess for the record, what is the stated purpose in the T E C D zone? I just don't happen to have that open on my, but you said it, it meets the stated purpose. So could you read what the stated purpose is?
Certainly.
The T E C D zone?
Yes. So at section 188-107.2 of the Hillsborough Township Ordinance, the stated purpose reads, "The purpose of the T E C D Transitional Economic Development District is to provide transitional employment generating development between the high-intensity light industrial and corporate development districts and the existing nearby residential development." That is the stated purpose verbatim from the T E C D zone.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How, how would you then measure intensity as referenced in the, in the purpose there?
So I would measure intensity by the bulk criteria, right? When you're, when you're a planner and you're asked to look at the intensity of a zoning district, you look at the bulk criteria. And when I say bulk criteria, what planners typically refer to as bulk criteria are the front and side yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks, and the building coverage. So if this application were violative of the front or side or rear yard setbacks, or it were exceeding the maximum impervious coverage for the zoning district, those would be things that would speak to, well, perhaps we are not aligned with the intensity that was envisioned for this district. We are so far below this, the coverage requirements for the zone. I don't have them in front of me right now. I can, I'll find them for you. But I mean, we're nowhere near the impervious coverage allowable in the zoning district. I testified to those numbers last time, so it's either in my transcript, I can pull them up if you want to hear them again. We are nowhere near them and we are well in excess of the setbacks. So we, we far exceed the front yard setbacks, the rear yard setbacks. So that to me as a planner speaks to the intensity, right? It's the bulk criteria which the zoning district sets forth and how our application does or does not measure up to those districts.
Have you, have you ever relied on any other metrics with respect to intensity?
Yes. Floor area ratio is often looked at, but the T E C D zone does not have a standard for floor area ratio. So that I would say would be another metric of floor area.
Anything to do with uses of the property, including traffic? Are there any other, other measures that are used by planners?
Well, if you were dealing with a use variance case, then certainly you would look at it, right? If I were dealing with a use variance and someone asked me to support a case for a use that wasn't allowable in the zone, one of the prongs the planner has to look at is the negative criteria and the impact on the zone plan. So what I would do in that case is I would look at the uses that were permitted and marry that up. Here, this use is permitted in the zone. So, and there's case law, I'm, you know, I'm not an attorney, but there certainly is case law that talks about when you're dealing with a permitted use, you can't really consider the impacts of traffic because legislatively, the governing body has already decided that use is appropriate at that location. So here in the case of the T E C D district, item number five on the permitted use list is warehouse shipping receiving located completely within an enclosed building. When this application was filed, that was a permitted use in the zone. So very difficult to ask me to come to the conclusion that something that was enumerated as a permitted use in the zone is too intense for the zone when you look at the standards that were created for it. Which is why when you're doing a use variance, there's a case called Price B. Himeji that talks about the bulks being subsumed. Because if you think about it, it's unfairly prejudicial to an applicant to apply bulk standards for a use that wasn't contemplated in the zone. So that's why when you're doing a use variance, you really, I mean, you can look and maybe be guided by the underlying zoning, but there are many attorneys and many planners and, and case law that points you to the fact that those bulks are subsumed. So you don't have to go and then request relief from front yard setbacks, building coverage, side yard setbacks. If you're getting a use variance, those underlying what would otherwise be C-bulk variances would be subsumed into your D variance. So again, not a yes or no answer and a little wordy, but I think it's important that, you know, that the board understands that these are things that planners, you know, evaluate and we are guided by the zoning and the uses that are permitted in there.
You mentioned, actually in that answer, negative criteria and are, have you addressed any negative criteria with this development in your report? And now, the reason I say that is I don't recall reading any, so.
You would only address negative criteria if variance relief was required. So I talked about that.
I, I thought that might be.
Yeah.
The response.
That is the response.
I just wanted to confirm that.
Yes. But the report does address it.
Does or does?
No, it does. Because it, it talks about it in terms of if the height variance were required, which we don't think it is, that it talks about that we would meet the negative criteria.
Okay. Actually, I just saw the height variance issue. All right. I think that's everything for me. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving along. Anybody else on the dais? Might have moved a little too quick. Guys are good. Professionals?
Nothing from our office, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Coice?
No, it does, because it talks about it in terms of if the height variance were required, which we don't think it is, that it talks about that we would meet the negative criteria.
Okay, actually, I just saw the height variance issue. All right, I think that's everything for me. Thank you.
Okay, moving along. Anybody else in the dais? Might have moved a little too quick. Guys are good. Professionals?
Nothing from our office, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Coice?
Same for me, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay. I believe next we would go to objector number one. Mr. Passaro?
Thank you. I do not have any questions.
Mr. Tarantino?
Scott Gross, nothing for me.
Oh, sorry.
Number three. We don't have to go over there. Ms. Cafone, could you help me understand how this, how the site plan complies with the section of the T E C D 188-107.2 F6? And I could read that if that's helpful. All portions of the development shall be linked via sidewalk and pathway network as approved by the Planning Board or Board of Adjustment. The site shall be pedestrian oriented with a design that enables and encourages pedestrian and bicycle circulation with linkages to surrounding areas. The applicant shall utilize the master plan in developing a pedestrian and bicycle pathway network.
I just want to be clear, you left out one portion of it.
And bicycle storage facility shall be provided.
That would be the complete section, yes. So, okay, how we comply with that. So we are not requesting any waivers from that section. What we did, I believe our original plan was modified to show a sidewalk network that went around the buildings, that we provided bike racks so somebody could walk on a sidewalk path around the entirety of the building. Our team spent quite a bit of time on a Zoom call going over this and whether that there was any real material benefit to having a sidewalk go in back of that building, but we included it because it was an ordinance requirement. So there is a comprehensive sidewalk pathway network that goes around the back of both buildings, both the smaller as well as the larger building, as well as bicycle racks that are on the property, that are proposed as part of the site plan.
And what about the other requirements in this section?
What do you mean, the other requirements in this section?
Bicycle, the applicant shall utilize the master plan in developing a pedestrian and bicycle pathway network. I don't see anything on the plan about a pedestrian network or a bicycle pathway network.
So there is a sidewalk that goes around the entirety of both buildings, so that is what we provided as our path around the building. And there are bicycle racks as well.
Okay, and what about a bicycle pathway network?
We just provided a sidewalk path around. So I assume if somebody wanted to really traverse the site, they could either, you know, ride their bike in the access aisles or on the sidewalk if they wanted to.
So they could go around the building, but you're saying traversing the site? They could go across the site? There's a sidewalk that goes across the site?
There's a sidewalk that goes through, around the site, that it goes around the back of the site. They could go from one end of the site to the other on a sidewalk. They could ride their bike on that sidewalk.
There's a sidewalk that goes around the building?
Yes, I'm aware.
But there's no other sidewalk?
No, correct.
Okay, and no bicycle pathway?
There's not a designated bicycle pathway, but there is certainly a comprehensive sidewalk network that can be utilized to ride a bike.
And what about the previous section four, same citation, but section four, "Shared driveways that serve more than one property may be provided where deemed appropriate by the Planning Board or Board of Adjustment. Cross-access shall be required between adjoining properties." Can you please explain how you are meeting that requirement?
So that reads, "Shared driveways that serve more than one property may be provided where deemed appropriate by the Planning Board or Board of Adjustment." So that uses what I call aspirational language, "may." So we are not providing a shared driveway. We did not design the site in that way. There are environmental reasons why we're not providing the shared driveway and other reasons, but the ordinance does not require us to have a shared driveway. There is certainly a difference between required language and aspirational language. When you see the word "shall" in an ordinance, that's something that has to be complied with. When you see something that reads "may," that is not a requirement, and the applicant cannot be mandated to comply or provide it.
And did you address that particular aspirational statement in your report?
No.
Okay, and then the second sentence there, "Cross-access shall," I believe that's the required language, "shall be required between adjoining properties."
That's if you're providing a shared driveway, you would have to provide cross-access easements.
I don't think that's what it says.
That's how I read it.
No further questions.
Okay, thank you.
John Lannan, objector number four, I have no other questions here.
Here's Chairman, is it appropriate, do you want me to wait if I have a follow-up question from a particular objectors witness or cross-examination, or wait through them all?
Counselors.
The next aspect, now the objectors have examined your witnesses, for the public to examine your witness. As we have with every other witness.
All right, objectors are done. Do I have a motion to open the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public would like to come and ask questions of this witness and this witness's testimony only? And state your name and address for the record, please.
Bill Martin, 237 Hillsborough Road. I guess my question is about intensity. I think my understanding of it is different from yours.
You might want to.
When you testified on.
Mr. Martin.
Well, thank you.
And again, Mr. Martin, I don't want to be rude to you, but it is more appropriate for me to face the board than it is to.
That's fine, no problem.
So without permission from the board, I'm going to face the chair while I answer your questions, so I apologize for having my back to you, but that's.
It's not a problem.
I'm doing my best to still be on the mic and, I'm sorry, your question again was about intensity?
Ms. Cafone is always apologizing that her back is to people.
I feel rude, I don't like it, it's not right, so I don't like it. Again, your question is regard to intensity, can you be more specific?
Yes, yeah, I have a question.
Thank you.
All right. For 1124, you stated you'd been to this location number, multiple times, correct?
Yes.
All right, so you've been to the LI district, Striker Lane, Eileen Court, Jill Court, Raider Boulevard?
Yes.
That's the light industrial district.
Yes.
All right. The T E C D zone, all right, no, I'm sorry, the light industrial district that is contiguous to the T E C D zone doesn't have 53-foot trailer park near your mule trucks to move the trailers around. Wouldn't this be the real intensity of the use of the property?
Well, I don't know that we can compare the use of this property and say it's not appropriate based on what's going on in another zone. So again, as I answered for the deputy mayor, as well as the other board members, the things as a planner that it is appropriate to look at intensity is what is permitted in the zone that you're developing and the bulk criteria. And it is an uncontroverted fact that we meet the bulk criteria for the T E C D zone.
Well, the difference here is that this is supposed to be transitional from the light industrial into the residential. So the light industrial, you know, should be looked at, the amount of, the intensity there. So did you do a study of the amount of trucks that are used in the light industrial?
So we did provide a traffic engineer who looked at the amount of trucks that would be provided, yes.
But not specifically in the light industrial area. I'm talking about a truck count in the light industrial area for a day, say, and compare that to your projected use.
So just so I understand the question, you're asking us, did we look at other properties in a different zone and what they're producing as far as truck traffic and how that relates to our project?
Yes, the zone that it's supposed to transition from.
So we didn't do that study. I mean, well, I shouldn't say we didn't do that study. Our traffic engineer looked at traffic in the area, so I think if you have any questions or had them for the traffic engineer on what exactly he studied, that engineer would have been the best witness to ask those specific questions to. But we certainly did produce a traffic engineer who looked at not only the circulation on our site, but the circulation to our site. So those things were certainly contemplated, not by me personally, but by our team, of course.
But your site is transitional from the light industrial, and he didn't count the trucks that go into and out of the light industrial?
Well, he certainly did traffic counts in the area, so where exactly he counted them, you'd have to direct that to him.
All right. Okay, on 4124, you stated that you reviewed the township ordinances, and this application must be in compliance with those township ordinances, correct?
Yes.
All right, did you review ordinance 188-68 off-street parking and loading?
I did, yes.
All right, 188-68B clearly states, "Access to loading and parking spaces shall be designed for vehicle access without requiring the moving of any other vehicle." Now, at warehouse number two, you have stacked parking with access from only one side of
Are you talking about on the western portion of our site?
The trailer parking.
Yeah, those are trailer parking spaces.
Yes, but they're stacked, so you'd have to move one vehicle to get to the vehicle in the back.
So I believe that we would meet our parking requirements without including those. If I see what you're talking about, it's hard to see on my site plan how many exactly are there.
It's 29.
29. So if those 29 spaces were not included in our parking count, I believe we would still comply. And I don't have that section of the ordinance in front of me, so I can't say.
Can you give the section of that ordinance again?
Yeah.
188-68B.
I don't have that in front of me, so. 188-68B, I'd have to look at it and see.
All right, so it's possible you're removing 29 trailer spaces tonight?
Well, either that, if we needed the relief, we either have to request the relief, if in fact it's required. That was not called out as a waiver or a variance in anybody's report, so that has, and this is, the application has been reviewed extensively by the board's professionals. So I certainly appreciate that you're reading a section that you believe to be, you know, accurate and as you read it, but I don't have it in front of me. That relief was not called out by any other professionals reviewing this application. So we do not request that relief.
Okay. So have we lost 29 spaces or not?
No.
We've not, you're going to request relief?
We're not, we don't know, we're not, I'm not stipulating that I think that relief is required. I would need to go back and look at that section of the ordinance, and we would, as a team, need to make a finding if the relief were required. That was not called out by any of the board's professionals as relief being required. There have been professional reviews from both the board's planner and engineer that did not call that out as a relief. So if it were in fact relief, then we would either have to, we would have to either revise the plan and comply and eliminate those spaces, or we would have to request the relief. But as of right now, that has not been called out as a variance or waiver in this application.
All right, same ordinance, 188-68E. The dimensions for parking spaces are parking spaces 10-foot wide or 20-foot long. I found no mention in the Hillsborough ordinance as about 12-by-55-foot trailer parking. Therefore, this is not in compliance with the ordinance, correct?
No. They're talking about passenger vehicle parking spaces here.
Yes, but there's nothing about trailer parking anywhere in the ordinance for off-street.
That section is governing vehicular parking spaces. That's my interpretation of that section of the ordinance, is that that governs vehicular parking.
Trailer is a vehicle.
I'm aware of that, thank you.
Well.
Passenger vehicle parking spaces.
All right, and that's what I'm saying, is that there is no, no part of the ordinance that calls for trailer parking. So no trailer parking should be allowed.
That's not my interpretation of the ordinance. The ordinance certainly allows for warehousing, shipping, and receiving located within enclosed buildings. It allows for manufacturing, processing, finishing, and assembly of products within an enclosed building. It allows for industrial and office parks, so in my opinion, these uses clearly are reliant on truck traffic. The ordinance actually has requirements for loading spaces, so there would be, it would be a very difficult conclusion to come to that an ordinance that requires you to have very large loading spaces didn't contemplate that there would be vehicular traffic associated with trucks.
Well, apparently they didn't, because that same ordinance does say 60-foot loading spaces, which you do have.
Right, exactly.
But it doesn't say anything about trailer parking.
Well, the ordinance certainly allows for uses that would have trailers, so there's no prohibition on trailer parking in the ordinance.
But there is no dimensions for trailer parking either.
I don't know that to be true. I haven't reviewed the ordinance to see if there is or is not standards for trailer parking. I know that there are standards for loading spaces. I know that the ordinance allows for uses that are reliant on trailer and tractor-trailer delivery. I know that the ordinance certainly contemplates drive aisles associated with truck traffic. So I disagree with you that the ordinance does not contemplate trailer parking.
All right, well, I guess that'll be up to the board to decide whether trailers are allowed or not, right?
Well, yes, the whole application is up to the board, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? And also state your name and address and that you're not affiliated with any of the objectors organizations.
Hi, my name is Leisha Gaber Baylis, I live in Hillsborough, and I am not affiliated with anybody else. Gaber Baylis, G-A-B as in boy, E-R, dash, B-A-Y-L-I-S. Thank you. First name is L-I-C-I-A. So I just wanted to ask, so just to confirm, you wrote the community impact statement, is that correct?
I did.
And do you know what the current assessment value of the property is?
I could look back in the document if it's not in there. If it's in my community impact statement, I could get that number. If not, I could.
If it's in there, I do apologize for missing it, but I know what, I know that you're estimating it to be about $67 million, once it's built?
That's once it's built. I don't think we give you a site for what is, it's assessed at now.
That's fine, I was just wondering if maybe the community impact statement only shows what, say, the new building is going to be and the land is as it is.
Well, it shows, it's a community impact, so it shows the impact of the proposed development. It's not, it's not meant to be reflective of the existing condition of the development. It's meant to be an impact statement to categorize what the impacts of the project will be, not the existing conditions on the site.
Thank you. So perhaps the whole project, once it's done, it will be more than, it'll be worth a little bit more than what you have listed in the impact statement because it would include the land?
No, the.
That would be the total amount?
The total amount would have contemplated the land, because it would have used an equalized assessed value of the entirety of the project, so it would have contemplated that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And I noticed that you use the word surplus in the document, as several other CIS statements do. Would you, is that intended to mean that any new and additional taxes that come, property taxes that come from this will be added to the township and the schools and the other entities?
Yes, the word surplus is an industry standard term when you're doing a community impact statement. That's meant to indicate what will be remaining after you've applied the costs to the development as well as the revenue to be generated to the development. That's surplus, you know, or in the alternative would be a deficit once you apply those things. So once you apply the costs associated with the project to the anticipated tax revenue to be generated, the delta there is what's referred to as the surplus.
So that would mean that the township would be allowed to go above their 2% cap by the amount listed?
I'm not qualified to speak to that.
Okay. That's how it reads, and that is what happens with the township. They do have a line item where they could add that, but the schools do not, so I just wanted to point that out.
So respectfully, it doesn't read that, it makes no mention of the township's 2% cap. I would not comment on that, that's not really appropriate for me to comment on, and my CIS, I would like the record to be clear, does not comment on that.
That's fine, it does say a net impact of 171,000 or so to the township and 915,000 to the schools, but I just wanted to point out that the schools would not receive any additional money. What happens to that money is that everybody else's taxes go down by that amount.
That's a very different statement in my report than in seniority that my report states anything about the town's 2% or.
I'm just explaining how it works and wanted to see if you understood, thank you. One other separate question is, you were mentioning the sidewalks earlier, is there a sidewalk to get to the sidewalk that loops the buildings, like from the edge of the property?
Yes, there's also a sidewalk, I believe that goes out to Homestead Road.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'm not associated with anyone. Thank you. In your testimony, the last meeting, April 11th, whenever that was, you stated that you didn't feel this building, I'm not going to call it a warehouse, the architect described it as a 338,000-square-foot flex build with no interior as of yet. You stated that you didn't think it fit a truck depot because there was no comfort facilities. Is it conceivable that comfort facilities could be added later?
It's not a truck depot for a number of reasons. If the applicant were to go back and add those facilities later, they would likely have to come back before the board, because those are not the plans that they've showed the board. So if they were going to materially change and then try to get a CO for it, those plans would be reviewed by the construction office in Hillsborough. So if they showed a different building that functioned differently than what was proposed in conjunction with this application, then the board would again, or the zoning officer would again have the opportunity to look at those plans.
Okay, so being that it's a flex build, even though it's a flex build, it can only be a warehouse, or can it be changed later interior-wise to reflect something else?
You cannot.
Like a storage facility, it's not allowed, but you have 52 bays, flex build inside, you put up 52 walls and make it a storage facility.
I don't think you could do that, I think, no, it's not. The zoning office, in my opinion, the zoning officer would get those plans and flag them and say, this is not, this was approved as a warehouse facility, a spec warehouse building, and that's not what we have before you. Fortunately, in Hillsborough, you have extensive definitions in your ordinance. Fortunately, in Hillsborough, you have extensive definitions in your ordinance and governance is you actually have a definition for a truck terminal. I'm not sure, I don't recall offhand if you define self-storage, but certainly the zoning officer would have the opportunity to look at those plans and say, this is not, in my opinion, what was approved by the board. So that is, is not at all a concern of mine.
Okay, so this building has to be a warehouse. Can't be without going in front of the board again.
The applicant could not provide a substantially different plan or use program for the, for the site and then come in to get building permits for that, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, motion to close public.
Second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
And I believe that's it for Mr. Cofone, counselor.
I don't have any other redirect.
Okay.
Any recross from any of the objectors based on the answers to the public?
No. Actually, I do. So Ms. Cofone.
Related only to the answers that she gave to the public?
Yes.
Just sort of the reminder, Brian.
So Ms. Cofone, you mentioned that, that it wouldn't meet the definition of a truck terminal because it doesn't have a comfort facility. And yet, Mr. Valenza testified that they would include a comfort facility.
So perhaps Mr. Valenza and I have different interpretations of what a comfort facility is. I think, if I, I don't want to speak for Mr. Valenza, but what I believe he was talking to, it would have a restroom. In my opinion, a comfort facility, when you're dealing with a truck terminal, in fact, there are articles on this and my office has, has represented these things. To me, a comfort facility at a truck terminal would have things like reservable showers. It would have a laundry. It would have a food court. So, you know, when you look at this, Truck Driver's Favorite Truck Stop Terminal Amenities. This is a nights.com publication, the top seven truck amenities. Driver's lounge, abundant food options, additional services.
Is this, has this been entered into?
I'm just answering your question. You asked the question. So these are, this is what informs my decision, that this is not a truck terminal or the comfort facilities. I believe your question was, Mr. Valenza testified there would be comfort facilities. I mean, sometimes when you're at a planning board meeting, you'll hear board members or say, we'd like to take a comfort break. And they go out and they use the restrooms here, right? So they're taking a comfort break to use the facilities here. That certainly doesn't mean that it's a comfort station.
They're not taking a shower, right?
Exactly. So there's not reservable showers. At a truck terminal, you would have those type of comfort stations, exactly. There's reservable showers and far more extensive things to accommodate those long-haul truckers at a, a truck terminal.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I respectfully disagree. I don't think that those are, that, and I don't know what reference you're talking about, but it, the plain English.
We'll agree to disagree.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Thank you, Ms. Cofone.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any?
We have no further witnesses at this point. We obviously reserve the right for rebuttal witnesses after the objectors put on their case.
Okay. So objectors, I guess we'll start in order. Mr. Pissaro, would you like to?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask just for like a five-minute break to confer with my colleague or colleague objectors?
Of course, yes. We'll reconvene. Let's, let's do five minutes, 8:06. Okay, we're back. Okay, on to the objectors, witnesses. Mr. Pissaro, would you like to proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Mike Pissaro, Policy Director for the Watershed Institute, and I have our expert witness, Dr. Clay Emerson from Princeton Hydro. Swear, man.
I do. Certainly. Clay, C-L-A-Y, Emerson, E-M-E-R-S-O-N.
Mr. Pissaro, before you start to examine Ms., Dr. Emerson, let me just make sure, Mr. Giannetti wants to make sure, and I want to make sure that everybody understands the rules of so-called engagement. You will get to examine Dr. Emerson. He will then be subject to cross-examination by Mr. Giannetti, then by the remaining objectors if they have any examination, and then the public, and then the possibility of redirect and recross.
I would just ask Mr. Bernstein, given that the objectors' interests are aligned, that after the testimony is given, if the other objectors have questions of this witness, they go first, and then I can cross-examine, cross-examine thereafter.
I think we're going to handle it in the manner I just described. Obviously, you'll have the right, if you want to, after their examination, to recross Dr. Emerson or any of their other expert witnesses, but that's the way we've generally been handling it.
Mr. Bernstein, excuse me, I think we get a shot too, right?
Yes, I didn't want to leave the board out of it, but the purpose is the, and the board professionals, but for the purposes of the manner, the public will, again, it'll be Mr., it'll be the board professionals and the board, then Mr. Giannetti, and then the remaining objectors, and then if there is, then the public, and then there is recross and redirect, we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Pissaro.
Anything else? Nope, all right, good. Dr. Emerson, if you could just please give the board, it's been a long time since someone had to tell me to talk louder. All right, sorry about that.
It's more, it's not so much for the board, it's for the, we really don't want to hear the public in the back. I can hear you.
I will do my best.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Emerson, if you could give the board and the public here the benefit of your credentials?
Certainly. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, licensed in good standing. My background is in civil engineering with a BS in civil engineering from Rowan University, a master's in environmental engineering from Drexel University, and a PhD in water resources from Villanova University.
All right. And what is your position at Princeton Hydro?
Certainly. I am the Senior Technical Director in the Engineering Department at Princeton Hydro.
And what does that mean?
I wish I knew. No, I, I do, a, a, as a technical director, I'm involved in the wide variety of projects that the company engages in, from stormwater management, floodplain management, stream restoration, dam removal, wetland mitigation projects, and a wide variety of other aspects.
All right. And from that answer, I'm assuming you have actually done stream restorations, designed them, planned them, as well as dam removals, wetland restoration, stormwater reviews, et cetera?
Yes, yes, I get involved in, in the full variety of work, yes.
And your services, you've been retained by applicants, by obviously environmental organizations like the Watershed Institute, but you've also done work for municipalities in reviewing stormwater systems and plans?
Yes, that's correct. We, I would say the majority of my day-to-day work, it, it's hard to say, but we do work for, you know, clients that range from single-family homeowners to the Army Corps of Engineers and, and everything in between. And that includes both applicants and objectors, like this one.
And municipalities, right?
And municipalities, that's correct.
Okay. And you also teach, correct?
I do. I teach, currently, I just teach one class at a graduate-level course on hydrology and hydraulics at Villanova University.
And this might be obvious, but you have been qualified as an expert before land use boards here in New Jersey before?
I have, including Hillsborough Township.
Okay. I'd like to offer, Dr. Emerson is an expert.
Any objections? I think we're good, thank you.
All right. Dr. Emerson, you've been retained to.
I guess to clarify, an expert in the field of what?
He is an expert in hydrology. He's an expert in stormwater. He is an expert in streams.
I'm not sure what an expert in streams means, but you're, you're offering as a civil engineer, as an environmental engineer?
Dr. Emerson, you have a civil engineering degree? You have an engineering water resources? What does water resources mean?
Yeah, so I'm a professional engineer with experience in, in water resource matters, including stormwater management and, and hydrology and other aspects that are consistent with the two letters that I have submitted for this application.
You're also a member of the New Jersey Floodplain Managers and a CFM?
Yeah, I failed to mention that. I'm a certified floodplain manager, which is an accreditation through the Association of State Floodplain Managers.
Just to be clear, I'm just, you said you're offering as an expert. I'm asking an expert.
As hydrology, watershed management, stormwater, hydrologic, water quality. I mean, he's issued two reports. Okay. Okay. All right. Dr. Emerson, you've been retained to review this project, and you have issued two letters in this regard?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. I want to go start with the stormwater management of this project. You've reviewed the latest set of plans from Mr. Ford, correct?
I have, yes. March of this year is the latest revision, I'm aware.
And you have listened to all the testimony or read the transcripts?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And or been present, yeah.
Okay. And do you have an opinion overall of whether the plans that Mr. Ford and the applicant has submitted to the township meet the requirements of the stormwater regulations?
I do, and, and my opinion is that, that it does not currently meet the stormwater regulations.
Can you tell us why it doesn't meet?
Sure. I, I like to break the compliance, the question of compliance down into the three central components, being water quality, groundwater recharge, and water quantity or peak flow control. And as, through my review and as is summarized in both of, both the June of 2023 letter and the June of 2024 letter, summarize many of those design deficiencies, many of which are also echoed, echoed in the township consultant's review letter.
Mr. Pissaro, are we going to mark these?
Sure. If we could.
I'm sorry, we're going to mark the reports as exhibits?
Why don't we mark, I think we're at objector number four is the next. So your June 2023 letter is oh, four, and your June of 2024 letter is oh, five.
What? Just to be clear, I'm not sure why we're marking their reports as exhibits. They were submitted to the board as part of the record. Our reports were submitted as part of the record, but we didn't mark them as exhibits.
Want to make sure they're on the record. You, you, actually, I believe many of yours were marked as exhibits, but it's up to the, it's up to the board. Board acknowledges that we have copies of Dr. Emerson's reports.
Right, and civil clerk.
Okay, thank you.
And we will reference some of that report directly, so I think it is appropriate to mark it, and thank you, Mr. Bernstein. Mr. Emerson, or Dr. Emerson, I'm sorry. I'm still trying to get to you, not calling you just Clay. Maybe it'd be useful to pull up the site plans if you have those up.
I do.
You want, yeah, we can go with warehouse number one if you want.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I'm displaying sheet five of the, what I believe to be the latest revision. This sheet is March 23rd, 2023.
And that was plans designed by Van Cleef Engineering, signed by Michael Ford?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So looking at warehouse number one, can you go through, or you're at warehouse number two? Okay.
I'm not sure.
All right, that is where, oh, no, I'm sorry. I have them reversed.
Now, perhaps someone else can provide some clarity because on this, they're both labeled number two.
All right. Let's go with the.
This one?
Yes. The, the eastern, which is roughly, how many square feet, just so we're both clear?
Approximately 370,000.
All right. So looking at the stormwater management system for the smaller of the two warehouses, can you explain to the board what your concerns with the plans are?
Yeah. So specifically, on this system, there's a series of three subsurface infiltration basins that surround or that are along the perimeter of the building. And those are designed with the intention of collecting runoff from the rooftop of the building and only the rooftop critically of the building. And I have a number of concerns. Number one, those systems are required to have a drainage area that's no greater than 2.5 acres, and the square footage of this building exceeds 2.5 acres times three. So to adequately treat the full, I'm sorry, to, to recharge the groundwater from the rooftop of the building, it, it seems appropriate that there need, needs to be more than three because the total building footprint exceeds three times 2.5 or 7.5 acres.
Nowhere, Mr. Ford's report on the materials you reviewed, did he do a delineation of those drainage areas?
No, I, I did not see that in my review.
All right. And can you explain to the board why there's a two-and-a-half acre drainage limitation? Where does that come from?
Sure, that, that comes from the seven quill eight, the green infrastructure requirements, and that's part of the definition, in effect, of green infrastructure is to limit the drainage area. The, the idea is to further distribute the stormwater systems across the site, and the way that they implemented that was with the drainage area limitation, which is 2.5 acres.
And that would be in table 5.1 of the green infrastructure rule of the seven quill eight?
Correct.
And if they were to exceed that two-and-a-half acres, they would have to get a waiver?
Correct.
Or a variance from the township?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Anything else with this smaller warehouse from a, concerns with its stormwater design?
Yeah, so the stormwater, the same subsurface infiltration systems that I just referred to, there are three that surround the eastern warehouse, are built, on average, in approximately five feet of fill, so that the site, under existing conditions, has a notable amount of topographic relief. It's, lives up to the name of Hillsborough. And the proposed development, by necessity, them being warehouses, and the associated parking is, is a very, you know, requires a very flat layout or topography. So the net result of that is that there's a notable amount of cut and fill on this site to take a rolling topography, natural rolling topography, and, and create these two very flat platforms for this proposed use. So where that comes into play in terms of the stormwater is in, in a couple different ways, but in this case, these subsurface infiltration systems are, need to be constructed in fill, and the quality type, construction techniques of that fill is not clear in the plans. And, and some of these, including the one that you see at the, call it the northeast corner of, of the building here, are in close proximity to retaining walls. of the building here, are in close proximity to retaining walls, the heights of which, in some locations on the site, approach 17 feet. So you kind of have conflicting interests, you know? A retaining wall has certain interests in mind, and a subsurface infiltration basin has different interests in mind. And what I mean by that is, the purpose of a subsurface infiltration basin, not surprisingly, is to infiltrate stormwater runoff, take surface water and turn it into groundwater, get it into the ground. And retaining wall, on the other hand, are designed with drainage systems to relieve, relieve hydrostatic, relieve hydrostatic pressures that, of water. And that their stability depends on that. So you kind of have, like I said, conflicting interests in close proximity to one another. Is your goal to infiltrate water, is your, or is your goal to relieve the hydrostatic pressure of said infiltrated water and get it out from behind the retaining wall? And at this stage, the retaining wall design hasn't been provided to the township, at least that I'm aware of. So I see that that's another conflict.
All right. And just one sort of clarification or correction, and my fault because I wasn't, the screen was way too small for me. The one we are talking about right here, you reference in your June 2023 report, it is labeled as warehouse one, 368,995,000 square feet.
Yes.
So we've said it was the smaller one, but in fact, this is.
Yes, and it's labeled as warehouse one and warehouse two, depending on what documentation you're looking at.
All right. So there is no design for the retaining wall that you're aware of?
Not that I've seen.
And that would be important because we have, as you mentioned, the conflicting goals of infiltrating, but also not creating too much pressure behind that retaining wall with water.
Yes, and you're, when you're filling, and this portion of the site is in, is in fill, depending on exactly where you look, you know, what's the point of infiltrating water just so that it's collected by a drainage system behind a retaining wall and not captured or treated or infiltrated, which is, again, these three systems, if we're looking at this warehouse, they're there for a reason, and that reason is to comply with the groundwater recharge requirements.
So if the wall released water, some of that water would not be infiltrated through the infiltration basins, and therefore the groundwater recharge requirements may not be met?
Correct.
Okay. Anywhere in your review of these documents, have you seen the infiltration rates for the fill or the subsurface?
Correct. Yes, I have seen it, and it is assumed to be 0.5 inches per hour. But I did not find any justification for that number. Obviously, it's a nice round number, but I don't know, you know, the material that it's said to represent hasn't been specified, isn't clear. Wasn't completely clear from the testimony that I heard from the applicant's engineer. And I think the construction practices themselves that are going to be used to put it in, I think that 0.5 is, you know, is not supported and may not have good reason to be expected either.
And does the rules allow for an assumed rate of infiltration?
Well, the rules require there to be infiltration testing conducted in the, essentially within the footprint of all the proposed systems, and that's another comment that was outlined in my June 2023 letter in some detail. And I think that comment also appears in the Panoni letter. So they don't, they don't have that infiltration testing currently. And they don't have all the necessary infiltration testing at this time. And constructing these systems in fill adds another level of complication there because that material is not available to test.
And to construct the retaining wall and all the fill for a parking lot, the subsurface has to be compacted, correct?
Yes, typical construction practices, and that there's language to that effect in the plan set.
Okay, and the fill would have to be compacted?
Correct.
And all of that may impact the infiltration rates?
Correct.
And so if the infiltration rates are impacted, they, there's no evidence right now before you to show that they've met the recharge requirements because infiltration rates may be wrong or different?
That and the drainage area limitation that I mentioned earlier.
So in those two areas, they don't meet the requirements of seven colon eight?
Correct.
All right. Any other issues with this particular warehouse? Or the stormwater design of this particular warehouse?
Yeah, the other component is, and I don't know if it's specific just to this warehouse, is the manufactured treatment devices that are designed to treat for water quality purposes. The sizing for those systems hasn't been done in accordance with the rules. And so that, the compliance with the water quality aspect of seven colon eight hasn't been, hasn't been demonstrated at this time either.
All right. Anything else with this, this warehouse?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to warehouse in the northwest portion of the site. Similar, there's been no designs for the retaining walls, and this site has retaining walls, correct?
Correct, it certainly does.
All right. You have similar concerns from the retaining wall perspective of having to relieve pressure, but yet having infiltration systems?
Correct. And this side, I believe, is the side that has the porous pavement in addition in the, around the eastern perimeter of the warehouse, between the warehouse and the proposed retaining wall.
All right. And in your report, you note there is, I think it was a 15-foot-high retaining wall adjacent to the Conrail tracks? And you mentioned some concerns with that?
Yeah, that stood out to me as, you know, something that I would think Conrail would be, want to be aware of. And I don't know what discussions, if any, have been had with the railroad. But the construction, you know, it, there's a retaining wall and it's, it's, the line on the plan is absolutely on the property, on the applicant's property. I'm not here to say that it's not. But to construct a retaining wall of that height, you don't just plop a wall into the ground. It involves excavation on the upgrading side of the wall that depends on the type of wall, construction methods, and things that haven't been detailed. So that just stood out to me as something unusual and that I would have questions about.
And that wall also would have to have some way to relieve water pressure or hydrostatic pressure onto your site?
Yes.
And that hasn't been detailed, where that is going and how that is impacting the overall site development stormwater system?
No.
All right. And I think in Mr. Ford's testimony, I want to say it was in June of last year, he testified he could create some sort of impermeable barrier along the bottom edges of these infiltration systems in order to sort of isolate it from the other parts of the wall.
Yes, I heard that testimony. I don't know, whatever hypothetical system that he was proposing there hasn't been submitted that I'm aware of. And frankly, it doesn't sound like a something that would magically kind of accomplish what he's set out to do. And the reason I say that is, when you put a subsurface infiltration or any kind of infiltration system in, water doesn't just go straight down. That's not how groundwater works, especially when you have layers of horizontal fill, you know, that's going to be put in at, you know, eight-inch lifts or one-foot lifts and compacted. Water flows horizontally, especially when you have a scenario like that, when you're constructing these systems in fill. And of course, it must flow laterally when you have, when perhaps you have natural limiting layers or shallow groundwater, and I believe there's a wetland swale that kind of transects this portion.
Is that the hatched area just above proposed story one, one-story industrial warehouse?
Correct. So in that case, groundwater flows horizontally, in some cases has to flow horizontally. So, you know, putting in an impermeable barrier, you know, again, it'll be a nice neat line on the plan, but that can be placed between the infiltration system and the wall. But I don't see that functioning in the way that he outlined in his testimony, nor have I seen the design for it.
And it's important to have these systems designed so that we can be, the board, its professionals, and the public can be ensured that these systems will operate as proposed?
Yes, in order to demonstrate compliance with the rules, I think the applicant's burden is to present a system that can be expected to function.
With the other warehouse, we talked about the soil testing and fill concerns. Do you have the same concerns with this warehouse as you did with the southeastern one?
Yes, and I don't, I believe portions of these subsurface beds are also in fill. I looked at all five of them and came up with that average depth of fill of approximately five feet. Obviously, there's five systems. They're linear in nature, so they cover a lot of ground. And again, the topography, the natural topography of the site is doing a lot. There's a lot of hills and valleys and things you can see in this image here that these systems transect, you know, a drainage way. So, you know, the amount of, in some cases, cut or fill varies widely even in a single system.
All right. Any other concerns you have with the stormwater design? Let me, let me stop, and let me try again. Do you have the same concerns about the drainage area limitations with this warehouse as you did with the other?
No, I believe the main concern was with the other warehouse, the eastern warehouse.
All right. Any other concerns with the design or lack of information?
So on this warehouse, there's also porous pavement that's proposed in an effort to meet, to address the water quality requirements. And I have similar concerns as I did with the subsurface infiltration basins when it comes to the pervious pavement systems. But putting them aside for the moment, my primary concern or my initial concern with the porous pavement systems that are proposed here is that they don't meet the definition of green infrastructure as it's outlined in seven colon eight. And that definition is, green infrastructure means a stormwater management measure that manages stormwater close to its source by, and there's three items. One, treating stormwater runoff through infiltration into subsoil, treating stormwater runoff through filtration by vegetation or soil, or storing stormwater runoff for reuse. And the proposed systems here, although pervious pavement, in some situations, can be considered green infrastructure. But in this instance, when reviewing the design details for this system, the system is a pervious pavement, surface course, crushstone, and the bottom of the system has an underdrain that collects runoff and discharges it, I believe ultimately into the pond constructed wetland 2A. So the runoff is available to completely bypass, obviously, there's no vegetation, but also bypass the subsoil, so it doesn't meet any of the three criteria outlined in that, in that definition. But going back to my previous concerns with the subsurface infiltration systems, here again, you have kind of these conflicting interests. You have porous pavement at the immediately adjacent, essentially, to the retaining wall.
All right. And then with, with the porous pavement, and I'm trying to find which sheet, I don't know if you can remember, the actual cutaway design of it? Because these are underdrained, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And this, can you tell us which sheet this is?
So this is sheet 19 of the same plan set.
Okay, that Van Cleef and Michael Ford prepared dated March of 2023?
Yes, the last revised date on this is the same.
And so the concerns with the porous pavement not technically meeting the definition of green infrastructure, can you explain a little more about that?
Yeah, again, this will be constructed on top of compacted fill. You know, there's this, to be fair, there's a statement here that says suitable on-site material or imported fill material, material permeability rate shall be equal to or greater than native on-site material. But that's, there's a lot of unknowns there, things that are, and again, I don't, that permeability isn't listed here. And so the ability for that runoff to get into the soil is questionable. And there's an underdrain at the bottom of the system, presumably a four-inch underdrain that will collect runoff and discharge it to the nearby wetland, proposed wetland basin.
And you would normally see an underdrain where, I'm sorry, Mr. Bernstein? Okay. So you're looking at, can you describe what you're looking at?
Yes. For the purpose of the record, this is, again, sheet 19, and this is the pervious pavement detail in the upper right-hand corner of the sheet.
And underdrains are usually seen where there is no infiltration or you're intercepting seasonal high water table?
Correct.
And underdrains, are they supposed to be at the bottom of the basin or somewhere within the storage bed?
Well, it depends on what you're trying to accomplish. And in this case, the underdrain is placed at the bottom of the system, thereby allow, it's a perforated pipe, thereby allowing runoff to freely enter it and bypass treatment by the subsoil, which again, I think is questionable due to the compacted nature of the fill.
All right. All right. And we've talked about your concerns with the manufactured treatment device and water quality?
Yes, again, they, the seven colon eight rules, and the BMP manual guidance requires the sizing of those manufactured treatment. the sizing of those manufactured treatment devices or MTDs to be based on actual calculated times of concentration to to come up with the treatment flow rate and make sure that you have the correctly sized device for the application for the drainage area. And they use the blanket constant value, which is is not not permissible. So the sizing of those systems cannot be confirmed.
All right. Dr. Emerson, so you say the assumed or the the assumed time of concentration of six minutes is not allowed. Is that your opinion or is that somewhere documented in the in the DEP rules and guidance?
Yes, that is documented in the DEP material.
Okay, all right. And I think this might be helpful because you have some issues also with the quantity reductions. If you could pull up your June twenty twenty three report in figure two. And this is oh, four. All right. So with the time of concentration calculations done by the applicant's engineer, you raised some concerns. Can you explain those?
Yes. And again, this is page six of oh, oh, four, labeled figure two. And it's a section, a snip of pen X J of the drainage report.
And let me stop you. The drainage report, who's drainage report?
The applicant's engineer's drainage report. And it has a couple modifications that have been made to to be clear. First, there's a yellow highlight over a a straight dashed line at the top of the figure. And then there's a series of dashed red lines and arrows denoting the flow directions which which I added. And my concern here is it it requires a little bit of explanation, but one of the requirements of an applicant is that they calculate the existing peak flow control, peak flow rates for a site prior to the development, because that sets the bar. It sets the threshold for how much they need to, how much storage they need to provide, how much they need to slow the water down. So it's a big deal, although it's not really a design aspect. It again, is it sets the bar. And there's so it needs to be done accurately. The 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 more that they can, the more that they underestimate this flow path, it results in a larger existing peak flow rate and allows a developer, not just them, any developer to build a smaller stormwater system, devote less land to the storm stormwater system. And so the accuracy and the the care that needs to be taken in drawing these lines while it seems like a pretty simple task, it actually has pretty big implications on your site design and layout, and honestly, in some cases, what you can fit on a site. So I know it just seems like kind of esoteric lines on a map, but it's actually quite important. And so the engineer's responsibility when they're starting a project like this is to make sure that they represent the existing peak flows accurately, that they don't overestimate them. If they overestimate them or then they're they're going to release more water than they would otherwise be allowed to, and people downstream should be concerned about that. So when an engineer approaches an existing site like this and you have this topography, your goal is to find the most remote point in this drainage area, the the path that's going to take the water the longest time to go from the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill. And that water can't just go any way that it wants to. It has to flow downhill, as it turns out. And so what we saw in this figure that was the reason for the comment is they they just have this flow path that I've highlighted in yellow as a straight line. It's going to go from this corner of the site right to the P O A point, which is the point of analysis. And I look at this topography, and I don't, number one, I don't think that's the way the water is going to flow. And number two, and most importantly, I don't think that's the longest flow path. I don't think that's going to take the water the longest, you know. The fastest way from point A to point B is a straight line, and that's a pretty straight line as I look at it. And it doesn't seem to really respect the topography. I would offer that the red lines that I've sketched on here follow the topography. You can see it everywhere where that red line, where any of those red lines cross a contour, which are those light gray lines underneath it, it'll cross it at a right angle, meaning that it's flowing downhill, down the slope. And although we didn't duplicate or try and recreate the calculations, I'm confident that if we had done that for any of these series of red lines, we would come up with a longer travel path and a longer time, and therefore a lower flow rate. And that lower flow rate would mean that their basins, that they're designed to to attenuate this peak flow, would need to be bigger than they are. And maybe they would fit, or maybe they wouldn't. That's a design question that that they would need to investigate. But that 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 was my concern as it relates to this this figure.
Let me ask some clarifying questions. So the line, the dark line A B in P O A, that was what the engineer, the applicant's engineer put in. You merely highlighted it as yellow.
Correct.
And that was what, that was the course that they are calculating their times of concentration from a baseline.
Yes.
You've added on the red ones based upon the topography of the site.
Correct.
Based upon the topography of the site that their own site plans are showing.
Yes, yes. No additional information, yeah.
And so by going through, using one or more of those red lines, you would have a slower rate from a baseline, which would then have to be matched or reduced.
Correct. It would lo- it would raise the bar essentially for for the post-construction design, and and they would have to result in a more restrictive system, perhaps bigger basins, smaller outlets on same basins.
All right. And that's important to, at least the the quantity rules, as I understand them, are trying to at least reduce the rate that water is discharged, so you're having less of a flooding impact?
Yes, this particular component, one of the three require central performance requirements relates to downstream flooding.
Okay. And I believe Mr. Ford testified to this in his June, but even if this this project was designed completely in accordance with the rules, using the right times of concentration and infiltration rates and everything, more volume would be leaving this site than currently is leaving it.
Yes, that that is correct and and reflects the calculations he submitted.
And so making sure that we are at least reducing that rate is very important.
Extremely important.
Okay. Anything else on stormwater?
No. No, I I think that 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 the letters, especially the June twenty twenty three letter has more details than than we could go into here, but but that's a a good summary of them.
All right. All right. I would like to move on. If I'm at your your pleasure.
Yeah. Go ahead, Sean. I concur.
I just have a recommendation that we address that testimony first before we go down the weeds too far, maybe from engineers or from the planning board that might have questions before we forget. So I'll defer to
Start with the dais.
Yeah. Or to engineer first. Not with, sorry, engineer.
Yep, start with our engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to ask for a little bit more clarification on the subject of retaining walls near infiltrate subsurface infiltration areas. Dr. Emerson, i- in your opinion, in generally in site construction, and I think the public notices as well, generally retaining walls are earth retaining, segmental block retaining walls. And in and in your experience, those type of retaining walls rely on geo grids inserted behind the wall to interact with the backfilled material to provide stability for the wall. In your opinion, wouldn't that type of wall be compromised by having an inf- subsurface infiltration system behind the wall, potentially even inside what would be considered the geogrid zone? And and maybe you could elaborate what I'm trying to explain as far as that zone of influence on a retaining wall?
Yes. So like I said, the construction of these systems, i- it's not just, you know, building a wall that looks simple on a a plan here, a line across the plan. You have to construct, again, there's different construction methods, as as you mentioned, geo grids, some some kind of tieback system. And with any retaining wall that I've e- ever seen, been a part of, there's a drainage layer to relieve that hydrostatic pressure of built up, by hydrostatic pressure, I mean buildup of water. It creates an an additional load on the on the wall that it it may or may not be designed to to withstand. So again, the the best I could come up with to kind convey this point is that there's conflicting interests in close proximity to one another. If I'm if I'm a retaining wall, I don't want an infiltration si- system on the high side of the ground right behind that, behind me. If I'm a infiltration system, I don't I don't want a retaining wall on the downstream side of me because it's it's got an opposite interest of getting the water out and back to the surface. So you know, this is a a a design issue that that is is that the applicant has created on their own here, and I think that's an important consideration.
We touched upon it. It was, and like you said, we don't have the the full design details on these proposed walls. But if, in order to eliminate that conflict between, say, a geo grid and the infiltration system, there's there's a possibility the applicant could propose a poured-in-place concrete wall. And in your experience, even if it was a concrete wall, the the designer of those walls would introduce weep holes at the bottom of the wall. I I think everybody in the public is seeing four-inch diameter black pipe sticking out of every wall that's ever constructed. And and the purpose of those weep holes is to relieve hydrostatic pressure behind the wall. So I think if you could elaborate on, so even if it was a concrete wall, with the weep holes relieving hydrostatic pressure, isn't that in fact removing groundwater from behind the wall? Groundwater that was intended for infiltration and therefore can we have any confidence in the recharge calculations?
No, that's that's exactly right. I mean, regardless of what type of wall is proposed, I I envision it, it will have a a drainage layer behind the wall. And like you said, there will be pipes that daylight on the on the side of the wall or at the base of the wall, and those, that system will be designed to collect groundwater from the upstream, the up gradient side of the wall, and and that's exactly where this infiltration system is. So it 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 really is a conflicting interest.
I think for the benefit of the board, maybe we should also clarify, you mentioned that some of these subsurface infiltration systems are in proposed fill areas. So in typical construction, the goal, the contractor is to compact the fill material as best as he can, which inherently limits the infiltration capabilities of that soil medium. So maybe you could better help the board understand your concern with infiltration systems proposed in areas where based on the topography of the site, the contractor is going to have to fill before he can build the system.
Right. Again, this this, on average, between the five systems, it was on average of about five feet of of fill, and this is structural fill beneath a roadway for truck traffic, essentially. So the the physical properties of soil that dictate how well, how easily, how readily water will flow through soil are the grain size distribution of soil, is it sand, is it silt, is it clay? And we don't know, that hasn't been specified. Even the note in the pervious pavement detail was generic and didn't didn't say what that material was going to be in terms of its texture or its grain size, its composition. And the second, and sometimes most important, aspect of a property of soil that dictates how fast or if water will flow through it at all is 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 compaction. Is, number one, are there pore spaces? And have those pore spaces where air and water could otherwise exist or flow been eliminated through mechanical compaction? And there again, you kind of have conflicting interests. From a structural standpoint, you can't have a differential settlement in the parking lot, and so you'll have specifications to compact that material, including, you know, geotechnical a proctor, you know, tests to to ensure that the material is being compacted, being compacted evenly, being compacted at the right moisture content to achieve this level of compaction. There's there's notes to that effect in the in the plans as well. And th- those are not practices or processes that are that encourage water to infiltrate.
When you were talking about the exhibit that demonstrated the time of concentration or what an engineer recalls a flow path to, and that's just one of the parameters utilized in calculating runoff volumes and flows. Would you clarify that it's just, it's not a subjective exercise by an engineer, but rather regulations require the design engineer to identify and utilize the greatest time of concentration in the existing condition?
Yeah, a- absolutely. And what I what I'll add to that is that if you gave two different engineers the same task, they might not draw the exact same line, but they're going to be very close to one another and 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 sometimes almost identical. But this is a pretty disparate, you know. The the difference between the one that the applicant's engineer drew here and ours, the ones that that I drew in red here. I think the figure speaks for itself. So it it's a it's a requirement. It, again, to your point, it's 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 not subjective. It has to be correct. It has major implications more than is more than I could possibly convey from just looking at a figure here with these lines. It's extremely important. And it has to be the most hydraulically remote flow path, and that's not what I see in this figure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That that covers the questions I have at this point, based on the testimony at this point.
Great. Thanks, Mr. Mahu. Mr. Quayce, anything?
I do not. No, thank you.
I would tend to ask anybody from the dais. And before or after that, I think it's time to give our court reporter a a break. I just had a quick question. You you'd mentioned about a lower flow rate needing a larger retention area. Can you help me understand that, where I would think a higher rate of flow would make that necessary?
Very, I'm glad you asked that question because it is kind of counterintuitive. So a higher flow rate in the So a higher flow rate in the proposed conditions, when the pavement and buildings are built, would require a larger system. But the way the water quantity or peak flow controls work is they don't give a developer a target. They don't say you can discharge at 50 CFS or 100. It's a percentage on the existing. So you analyze the existing site with no warehouse, no pavement, and come up with your baseline. And so if you elevate that baseline, you raise your allowable, because it's, for example, 80%. So if I draw a line like this yellow line and I come up with 100 CFS under existing conditions, well, then I can release 80 CFS. But if I draw a more, perhaps a more, in my opinion, a more accurate line, and, you know, I only come up with 50 CFS, now I'm only allowed, you know, 80% of 50 CFS. So I have to end up with a larger basin under proposed conditions. So I'm glad you asked that question because it's a little bit counterintuitive.
It is. Thank you. Anybody else?
I've got two, and then we'll let people take a break. So the, back to this top math here, this path here, is there any indication where the yellow line is? Because I can see obviously where the red line is, it seems to follow some existing waterways that seem to be on the map. On that yellow line, there's any indication that that's a natural flow of water between the A and the P away, as far as what you would see? Not that it's not existent, but it seems like there's a slower path, which is creating those kind of water, natural waterways and the ones that you drew.
Right, exactly. The topography here is, you know, rolling hillsides that have flow converging and ultimately forming, you know, first order tributary streams. And you can see that these red lines, each of them kind of reflect that. You can see how water would flow, I'm motioning here with the hand, down this way and converge from both directions. And you see each of these, even here, how there's a little bit of a concave topography that would bring the water, you know, this long circuitous path before getting to the point of analysis. But this line is just straight. You asked me if it follows some kind of natural drainage path? Not that I'm aware of, not that I see, no.
Okay. And my second question, I think that Mark answered it from the retaining wall standpoint. Obviously, normally on a retaining wall, there's some sort of mathematic equation on how far you need to go back to set a geo grid to have an adequate structural integrity of the wall. In your opinion, how far away should your BMPs be from a wall like that so you get the proper infiltration that you have without worrying about that drainage through the pipes of the wall?
I don't have a set number for that. It depends on a couple things. And a few of those things are, what are the soil conditions, how much fill, what is the elevation of the toe of the wall versus the bottom of the system? So for example, if the proposed infiltration system were, you know, many feet below the base of the wall, I wouldn't have concern, you know, as long as there was relief for the system. But we don't see that here. We see these in close proximity. In fact, I think in some locations, the wall itself is taller than the separation distance to the system. And that's way too close. What I would have liked to see, and I think I raised in the June 2023 letter, was, you know, how the groundwater mounding analyses that were done, will those groundwater mounds intersect, that are predicted from the calculations intersect the walls? I don't think that was discussed whether it would or wouldn't, but, so I don't have a number on that. Depends on a lot of factors. But I can say for both of these retaining walls, the eastern side of the upper warehouse and the northern side of the southern or eastern warehouse, these appear to be closer, that I would expect them to interfere with the retaining wall and vice versa.
All right. And my last thing, I think you touched on it, when you're doing analysis for PERC, right, and for unnatural, let's say, pit that they're testing now, how do you account for, after they do the compaction that they need to do on the cut and fill and to make the road, the driveway safer, the vehicle traffic is, how does that change the calculation of when they're designing the system for proper water infiltration?
Yeah, it's, you know, conflicting goals there. The one is to prevent infiltration, prevent differential sediment, and the other one relies on the pore spaces that you literally remove when you compact soil. So while they do have some infiltration testing of the existing site at the existing grades, many of these systems will be above that in material that may originate from onsite or anywhere else, I think is the note put it, and be compacted, however the contractor see fit in accordance with the plan. So there's a lot of unknowns there, and not by necessity. This is a design choice that was made by the engineer. So, yeah, it's a difficult, it creates a difficult situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we're going to take 10 and we'll reconvene in 9:20. Okay, thank you. I guess next it goes to Mr. Gianetti. You have questions for Dr. Emerson?
I thought you were just talking about board member questions. I prefer to wait until he completes his whole testimony before I question him.
Okay, very well. Mr. Persari, you want to continue?
Yep, thank you very much. All right, Dr. Emerson, if you could pull up your June 2024 letter.
Yes.
All right, and go to page two, figure one.
Yes.
My favorite topic, the stream. So in your 2023 letter, you identified this as a stream that would be applicable to Hillsborough Stream Corridor Ordinance. Why are you calling this a stream?
Yeah, so on the display, I have page two, figure one of 05. And this figure is a section of the plan set, the current plan set, March 2023, zoomed in kind of on the eastern warehouse. And I've added a red dash line here that follows the converging path of surface runoff. And there's a topographic feature that is seen, at least in this topographic map and in aerial photos and where water flows. It has, as can be seen in this topography, although not quite at this scale, it has defined bed and banks that confine and conduct the normal continuous, or in this case intermittent, flow of water, consistent with the ordinance definition of a channel. And again, it has those bed and banks which convey water, at least periodically, consistent with the ordinance.
So, taking a look at the topographic lines, and I know they're kind of faint here, does that suggest why this is or is not a stream?
Yes, to, to state that there's a bed and bank, that's referring to topographic features. And you can see how far these contours pull up into the up gradient landscape and the somewhat meandering flow path that the water flows is consistent with my definition of a stream, albeit a first order tributary or, you know, a headwater, not the kind of stream that you would canoe down or swim in or something like that, but a smaller first order tributary nonetheless.
And a first order tributary is just as much as a stream as a fourth order?
Correct, in accordance with the ordinance, yes.
All right, and we had prepared a colored gradient, if you can pull that up. All right, if we can have this, we'll mark this as 06, I believe it is. And this was prepared by my office under your direction, correct?
Correct.
And can you tell us what this shows and why you suggested it be done in color?
Sure, so this is, shown in red is the approximate property boundary of Lot 33. And the, there are topographic contours, they're labeled here, they're every two feet. So you see an 86 and 90, 92, 94, and so on. They're not all labeled, but a lot of them are here so you can follow. And this topographic data is taken from the 2018 LiDAR, or that's where they fly and literally bounce lasers off the ground surface and get a very accurate representation of the lay of the land, if you will. And so the higher elevations are displayed in lighter colors, and the lower elevations are displayed in darker colors, in this case, monochromatic blue. So this enables you to see, relatively speaking, high point on the left side of the property and another kind of ridge line or high point along the eastern side of the property. And in the middle is what ultimately forms this first order of stream. So you can see how runoff from this side of the high point will flow and converge to the east, and runoff from the east side will flow and converge from the east towards the west. And then you see the stream in question becomes a little more defined, I think, in this view.
Mr. Cook, in his testimony a couple months ago, said that the applicant dug this. Does the topography suggest that's what happened?
Not, not in my opinion. And the reason for that, there's twofold.
I'm just going to object because this happens often. They refer to testimony of our witnesses that are just inaccurate. So if they're going to refer to testimony of our witnesses, they cite to the transcript because he never testified that the applicant created this drainage ditch.
Had it created, maybe it would be more accurate.
The applicant?
Speaking to Mike, please.
Yes, so Mr. Cook testified, I believe, let me find the transcript again.
And as you're looking, I'll just mention, we will conclude testimony at 10.
While I'm looking at it, I will rephrase the question. Does this, does the topography, as you see, reflect what you would think to be manmade or naturally occurring?
Yes, so to be clear, before, when I was describing the relative ridge line on the eastern side of the parcel and the one on the western side, and this feature, this stream is in between them. So this is an area where naturally I would expect flow to converge. And if I were looking for a first order tributary or small ephemeral stream, this is exactly where I would find it. And I don't know, not know or doubt whether or not someone may have modified this feature at some point in the past, whether that be the current property owner or previous property owner, that's not unusual in an agricultural landscape. Nevertheless, I'm left with a feature that meets the definition of, meets the township ordinance definition of a stream and a channel and a water course, and it's in a place where I would expect to find one, even if the landscape were completely untouched, no history of agricultural use.
All right, and if you could go back to your report and go to figure two, so again, exhibit 05, can you tell us what that is?
So yes, this is page three of 06, of 05, rather. And this is an aerial photo, an aerial image obtained from historicaires.com, identified by that service as a 1971 aerial image of this portion of Lot 33. And what you see here, or what you don't see here, is the large area of pavement and parking areas that Mr. Cook discussed. But you see in the exact location of the stream in the figure in 06, you see a linear feature consistent with my interpretation of aerial imagery of a first order stream flowing in the same direction, in the same location.
All right. And so in your expert opinion, the aerial photography demonstrates a natural stream?
Correct, and it's not just the image that I have here. I reviewed as many as I could find, and they told a consistent story.
And now, for the record, transcript of March 7th, line 19 on page 55, question, okay, all right, at the January 25th hearing, you indicated you had a conversation with Mr. Shockley about this feature being manmade, correct. Did he tell you that he made that ditch or had it made? Answer on page 56, line one, he said he had it made.
Mr. Shockley is not the applicant in this application.
Property, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. All right. But in your opinion, the topography, the aerial photography, shows a preexisting natural feature, a stream?
Yes.
All right. Anything else you want to talk about about this?
No, I think, I think it, the aerial images speak for themselves. I think that, I disagree with Cook and his, whatever you would call it, criticism or comments related to the ordinance. I think this feature meets the definition. I think the definition in this case is clear. And I also disagree with other aspects of his latest report with respect to the function or, in his opinion, lack thereof of the stream. But that is detailed in the June 2024 report.
All right, and one, I think, hopefully, last question. You haven't been on the site, right?
No, I have not.
And you were present at one of the hearings where I requested permission to go on the site, and we were denied that.
That's correct. I have driven by the site on Homestead Road, but I have not had the opportunity to access the site.
Your stormwater testimony doesn't require you to have been on the site?
No, it doesn't require me to have been on the site.
And your testimony on the stream corridor or the stream, bless you, is based upon aerial photography and topography?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all the questions I have on direct.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move to the questions from our professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Emerson, maybe you could help explain to the board, you said, I believe, this is a location you would expect to see a stream feature. Could you explain why you would expect to see that in this location?
And that, the reason for that, I'm going to go back to 06, that shows the, again, the topography or the relief, the topographic relief of the site that shows the high points and the low points. So you see this you see this, you know, that really starts from the main stem, the Royce Brook down at the, at the top of the figure here at elevations, you know, in the, in the sixties. You see this low point kind of reaching up into the, into the site, the darker colors pulling up almost to Homestead Road, which is, is kind of at the high point here. So this is an area where flow is not different than the time concentration figure that we, we talked about prior to the break, where flow is naturally converging and concentrating and ultimately joins, you know, it has a floodplain that joins the larger floodplain of, of Royce Brook here. So the reason that I would expect to find a feature like this in this location is the fact that all these contours converge and bring water together to accumulate. So this is an area that would periodically flow during periods of rainfall or high groundwater conditions, you know, late, late spring, things like that. This is where you'd expect to find surface flow and you know, close, you know, shallow depths to groundwater, things of that nature.
So is it true, in your opinion, this is a naturally occurring low area where stormwater is naturally draining to and concentrating and therefore flowing?
Yes.
And based on the LiDAR data, there, the water course feature is fairly dark. Is that indicating that it's, there's deeper elevations in that area that the feature has depth to it?
It, it does. And, and, you know, I, I can zoom in here and what you'll see is that contours, like if I pick this eighty-eight contour here, it pulls all the way up and wraps around somewhere, you know, in the ninety-two or ninety-three, indicating that in, in this area, the feature is, you know, four, I'll say roughly four to six feet deep. And, and these contours are not completely dissimilar from, in fact, in some cases, they may be very similar to what was shown in the applicant's materials. And I'm going to refer back to, to better answer your question, refer back to oh five. And specifically in figure three, and you can see in figure three, on, on the right side of figure three, which is a, is a clip taken from, now, I guess I should, should be clear here. The right side is taken from the site plans, which were last revised February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. The left side comes from a previous version. But you can see those contours pulling up into the landscape on the right side of the figure. Initially, I was puzzled by this because earlier versions, some of the application materials have, don't, don't show it. I, I don't know what the, what the issue is with, with the earlier application materials. I'm referring to the left side of, of figure three, where you can see that the stream here, this little meandering darker area where all these contours are pulling up, is absent completely from some of the application material. And I, I can't explain that. I, I've looked at the, the notes on the plans and I can't explain that, that discrepancy. But to your question, it, it does appear on the current plans, in any event, and you can see it pretty, pretty clearly in the, in the topography here.
You mentioned, based on the contour and topographic information, that it appears the sides of this water course could be four to five feet deep. In your opinion, would those be considered banks?
Yes, absolutely.
And in your opinion, at, at the bottom of this feature, would you consider that a channel?
Yes.
Maybe you could go to, you had a exhibit, was an aerial photograph, I believe, from nineteen seventy-one?
Mm-hmm. I do. Figure two.
And if you could use your mouse to highlight the, where, where you believe that feature is located for everyone?
Yeah. So I'm
If, if, am I correct in the, in stating that along that feature, it's dark? It's, it does not appear to have been planted for crops. It appears to be in natural condition in sort of like the tree lines around the property. Would you agree that, in your opinion?
Yes. And I do want to be clear that other aerial images display the stream even clearer than this one does. The, the significance of this one was that part of Mr. Cook's testimony and his, and his report suggested that it, it only existed because of or as a result of, and I'm, I apologize, I'm not quoting him directly, but as close as I can. It was only there as a result of or to support stormwater conveyance from the parking area that's there now. And that parking area wasn't there in nineteen seventy-one, yet, yet the, the stream feature appears to be present. So that was the significance or the choice of displaying this particular image.
Well, based on the aerial imagery and what it intends to indicate from a site cover, and based on the topography, in your opinion, would you say that this indicates water flows periodically through this feature?
Yes.
Based on the topography and the aerial imagery, in your opinion, does this feature have a terminus?
Yes, its terminus is clear. It's, it's the confluence with the, the larger stream.
And in your expert opinion, Dr. Emerson, based on photography, topography, does this feature have a source?
Yes, it does. The source is the natural concave topography that, that feeds the stream, that surrounds the stream, that ultimately defines the stream. And there's also a pipe, as was outlined in Cook's report.
And I'm not sure that it matters, but even in your opinion, even if that pipe wasn't there, there would be water flowing through this feature?
Absolutely.
That's all the questions I have right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mark. David?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So move on to anybody on the dais?
Hi, Dr. Emerson. You made a reference to the man, whether it was manmade or natural. The, the question I wrote is, does it matter if it's manmade or natural? And it sounded like it didn't, but can you clarify what, what you had previously said about whether it was manmade or not?
Yes. So my opinion was that regardless of whether it's manmade or not, it's in a location where I would expect to find, to, to find a naturally occurring first order tributary, a small stream, an ephemeral stream, a stream that just flows perhaps during periods of rainfall or high groundwater. Whether it was modified or not, or even manmade, which I, I don't think it was, it, it doesn't change its classification as, as a stream, in, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? So we'll go on to Mr. Giannetti?
Again, I would like to reserve my cross-examination until, until after the objector attorneys question the witness. It's effectively the same direct. It's, it's their witness as well. I should have an opportunity to hear all the objectors question their witness and then I can cross-examine.
If I may, we are separate objectors with separate interests or concerns. They may or may not overloop, overlap at times.
Play that game. We all know what your interests are. They can ask their questions. So if they have anything else, then I can cross-examine everything as opposed to going in a circle on this. I don't see any harm in allowing the objectors to ask them his questions. I suspect it will be limited. And then I can cross-examine, do my cross-examination.
Followed them by redirect from all the objectors, then recross. Is that what you're proposing, Mr. Giannetti?
I'm sorry. I don't know. I haven't understood that last part.
You're proposing that all the objectors now question Dr. Emerson, then you'll question after. That presumes that the next round before the public gets to it is Mr. Pizarro gets to redirect, redirect from the, or recross from the objectors, and then you get to recross, and then we get to the public. Is that what you're proposing?
If I, if I have recross.
I'm just saying, based on your theory, that's what you're proposing.
Mr. Bernstein, I think you dealt with this in the beginning. We do it in the normal course. As Mr. Giannetti has indicated multiple, multiple times. You know, I, I'm here at the board's pleasure and what they wish to do, but you know, this is our, our part of the case. The normal course would be for Mr. Giannetti to cross-examine, cross-examine by any of the other interested parties and the public.
That's not normal course. He has no basis to say that. That's not, there's nothing normal about this to begin with. It makes sense that all the objectors would ask the witness these questions and then I can cross-examination, could do my cross-examination. This is not out of the ordinary or some crazy theory.
I don't think we have the legal experience to that. I have to defer to counsel.
I really think without terribly marking up the record, the issue, this is not normal. It's not the first time and it's not going to be the last time, counsel, that you and I have sat through hearings with objectors. I'm sure you have.
Not set up like this, so.
Well, as Mr. Pizarro correctly points out, there are five distinct and different objectors with five different and distinct criteria, so to speak. If, if you were to take your argument to its conclusion, Mr. Pizarro would be calling a traffic expert. He'd be calling an engineering expert. He'd be calling all of the usual things that an objector calls. That's not the case here. He's calling Dr. Emerson. Someone else is calling, I understand, at their behest and their price.
I don't dispute that.
Traffic and an engineering expert separately. Mr. Chairman, I standing by the position I've made before, and we basically have followed throughout this entire process.
Okay. Then it's, it's your questions, Mr. Giannetti?
This is ridiculous. Unless you want to hold off questioning until the next meeting?
I, I think I'll start.
I, I remind counsel that at ten o'clock, this board, I think, is going to call it quits. So be aware accordingly. Dr. Emerson, I assume you're available on the twelfth of September?
Is that the same day? Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Emerson, in your qualifications and when you were qualified as an expert, you talked about hydrology and, and stream. But you're, you're not a geotechnical engineer, are you?
Despite my name, Clay, I'm not a geotechnical engineer. I've had geotechnical coursework.
But you're not a licensed geotechnical engineer?
Well, there is no such thing as a licensed geotechnical engineer.
I guess I'm coming back here, but you're not a geotechnical engineer. Do you, do you prepare such plans?
Do I run geotechnical tests, things of that nature? Do I, have I done geotechnical designs? Yes. We have a lab, a geotechnical lab in our office.
Wait, say we.
Yes. And I've run geotechnical tests. I've, I've, I've done limited geotechnical designs. I, I don't do that currently, but I have done that in my capacity at Princeton Hydro and at one other previous firm as well.
Have you, I guess to clarify that, do you design site plans?
It is not something that we, we do. It's not something that's in our, and you, you motioned to this site plan that's up here. We, we do design site plans. We, we do not design warehouse site plans, to more specifically answer your question.
I mean, in general, do you, do you prepare, you, not your office, you, do you prepare site plans submitted to planning boards?
For land development activities?
Land development.
Extremely rarely.
Do you design retaining walls?
Not recently, but I have designed retaining walls while at the current company and I, I did more of that at previous firms.
You, you mentioned doing applicant work, municipal work, obviously objector work. What percentage would you give towards applicant work, objector work, municipal work?
So you want three percentages amongst those three?
Well, if those are the three types of work you're doing, yeah.
Well, we do other work beyond those three, but if you wanted to break it up, just, just those three?
Well, when I say municipal, I mean government.
Okay, okay. It, it's, it's hard to put precise numbers on it, but it's a fair question. So I'll try. I do far, far more work for applicants than I do objectors, which I think might be at the root of your question. But, you know, to put, I could put some numbers on that, but it, it would be pretty, pretty rough.
So then you don't have a percentage?
So municipal, maybe it's twenty percent and sixty percent applicants. Maybe twenty percent objectors. Like if, if I just look at the hours in a week or the hours in a month or the hours in a year, something like that?
When you say applicant work, are you working directly with the applicant? Are you being engaged by an outside civil engineer?
Both. Sometimes we're contracted by the developer directly, but quite often I'm providing services for a, a more typical site civil firm, similar to Van Cleef, the applicant's engineer here.
Have you done objection work for, against other warehouse applications?
Yes.
How many are you currently doing?
Currently warehouse applications that I'm working on?
As, as an objector?
I, I believe just two, this one and another one that's currently in front of this township. I cannot think of any others that are ongoing right now.
How about your firm? Do you know your firm?
We do have a couple other objection cases going on now, but I don't think any of them relate to warehouses.
I guess since we kind of left off, or you ended on, on the, the stream issue, I guess I'll start there. Have you prepared DEP wetland applications, submitted to the, submitted DEP wetland applications to the DEP?
Can you be more specific by what you mean by wetland applications?
Whether it be letters of interpretation, general permits, individual permits?
Yes. So I, I am not a, I do not delineate wetlands in my day-to-day work, but I have submitted and fairly routinely submit, you know, like you said, general permits for things that entail permitting through freshwater wetlands, where I'm the person signing the plans. We have other regulatory specialists that are doing the notifications, doing the wetland delineation, the field work, but I'm involved with those.
So you're not involved in delineating the wetlands. You're more of if, if something needs to be filled as part of an application, submitting that application to the DEP?
Correct. Whatever, whatever engineering aspects are involved with the permit application.
How about flood hazard area permits? Have you ever prepared and submitted flood hazard area permits and/or delineated? Have you ever prepared and submitted flood hazard area permits and or delineations to the DEP?
Yes, that's a big, big part of what I do on a day to day basis. As a certified floodplain manager and and with a background in open channel flow, hydraulics, and floodplain management, I'm very familiar with that process and routinely involved in those aspects.
Were you involved in drafting any of the DEP wetland regulations?
No.
How about their flood hazard area rights regulations?
No, no.
In in that, if you could bring up figure one from your report.
Which report are you referring to?
I believe it's in the it actually might be both the, I guess, in the June 28, 2024. It had that red dashed line. And I guess I want one more point of clarification. You noted before there was some discrepancy at one point, plans didn't show or didn't the the stream or the the topography didn't show on a prior plan, but it is on the current plans. Was that your testimony?
Not exactly. The topography, and I'm referring, I think you're referring to figure three of the same report. The topography is shown. There are topographic contours here. They're just not accurate, and they're reflected. They they tell an extremely a totally opposite story, in fact. So the stream that is clearly here with these contours.
Clay, you're referring to the right part of the figure?
Yes, the right side of figure three on page five. So I I didn't say, and I didn't mean to say that the topography isn't shown. There are contours here.
I'm referring to you said there was a discrepancy, and I thought you were referring to the depiction of the stream, that it wasn't shown on prior plans, but shown on the current plans. Was was that your testimony?
Yeah, but it's 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 you ask a different question this time around slightly. So it's not that information was missing from this image from the 2022 application materials. There is nothing missing here. The contours are shown. It's just these contours that are shown are not accurate. I don't know where they came from, and they mask the fact that there's a stream there.
How about, so well, you're aware the DEP issued a letter of interpretation delineating all the wetlands, correct?
I am aware of that, yes.
And does that show it?
Does it show it? Can you be more specific?
Everything you're saying that was not accurate, is it correct on that plan approved by the DEP?
Objection, if you want to show him particular plans or.
So you didn't review the DEP wetland permits?
No, I'm asking if you my objection is, you want to show him something specific, go ahead, but.
I don't if he said he reviewed it, I can ask him a question about it.
I believe are you refer you you said it and it what it what is it? Is it is it the topography? Or is it the stream itself? Because there are various things displayed on these exhibits and the LOI that you're referring to. But if you could be more specific, it would be helpful, perhaps.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, you have a figure from, I think, what, 2022, and the plans have been revised since then a few times. And there were plans approved by the DEP, right? When you get a wetlands delineation, it includes a plan that shows a photography, shows a stream, and it said, in this case, it says ordinary resource value ditch. And it has zero resource value. Was there anything on that plan that you believe, whether topography, identification of the stream, that was inaccurate?
I I don't know, but I think the answer is generally no, that the topography that's depicted on the right side of this figure is what I believe was depicted on the plan that's contained with the LOI.
And you talked about, or there were some questions about this, either whether it was a drainage ditch or a manmade ditch or naturally occurring. And you said you formed an opinion it was naturally occurring based upon the topography.
Correct.
But as you noted, you haven't visually inspected the site, correct?
Not for lack of trying.
And you don't know for sure whether it was manmade or not. It could be manmade.
It could be manmade, yes, but the the fact of the surrounding topography tells me that it would be there whether historically someone intervened or not, which is very different than if it were in any other location or any other direction or configuration.
If you could bring up in your June 28 report, I guess, figure two of the 1971 aerial image.
Yes.
And you're saying that black and white grainy image shows the stream as it exists today?
No, I I don't believe that was my testimony. I I believe that this, as you put it, grainy, black and white image shows a stream in the location where it exists today. I I can't interpret pull any more out of this image than I think it, you know, it speaks for itself. So it it shows a stream feature in the in the location, was my testimony, of the stream that is shown in in the other exhibits that we we referred to.
So you're saying that that picture clearly shows a stream feature?
Again, I chose this picture. There's nothing significant or especially noteworthy about this particular image, except for the the fact that it preceded what the applicant's expert used to explain the presence of the stream itself, which is the the parking area and the the building that's there currently. There is no the building that he was talking about in the parking area is not present in this image. So if you examine any other aerial imagery, you know, more recent, the stream is even more evident in those images. So the the reason this image was shown was was chosen was kind of because of the date of the image and the fact that it predates what your expert seemed to use as the reason for the existence of the stream itself.
Did you look at any other historical aerial photos that may have been clearer from around that time?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Did you look at 1979?
Yes.
Was that a clearer picture?
I don't recall.
Was it in color?
I don't recall.
In that picture, can you tell how wide the drainage ditch is?
I did not include a scale in this image, so I can't scale it off here. I know from the topography that was submitted as part of the application that it's relatively narrow, and it doesn't look any more or less narrow in this image than it does in the in the topography, but I I can't confidently pull a dimension.
So can you tell how deep that drainage ditch is in that picture?
No.
Can you can you tell where the origin is?
Yes, I mean, depends on how you define origin, but it it starts in this.
Are you able to zoom in by any chance?
It starts, this is Homestead Road, to be clear, what I'm looking at here.
Can you zoom in any closer?
So the bottom of the image is Homestead Road, and and the feature appears shortly after or in close proximity to the building that at least existed in in 1971 here, and flows north in a generally north northeast or north direction, just like it does currently.
Last question, Mr. Giannetti.
Well, it kind of goes.
You'll stick to the photo. Let's finish that up.
Yeah. I don't think I have anything else with respect to the photo.
Thank you, Mr. Giannetti. Okay, so with that, let's say after 10, we'll carry this to the September 12.
Yes, applicant will have a significant portion of the September 12 meeting. Your motion, Mr. Chairman, to continue this hearing to Thursday, September 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard without further notice.
Do we, given the
Need a time of.
Limited time on the 12th, do we know what the agendas look like after the 12th?
November 7.
We needed an extension?
Well, at the moment, we don't need an extension. We have an extension through the end of September. If Mr. Giannetti wants to book in the meeting on the 7th of November, we'll need an extension.
Is that a a full meeting? Do we know if there's?
At the moment, it's going, again, it's going to be as close to a full meeting as possible, considering that there are other applications and other matters before it, but you'll get a significant amount of the meeting, as you will on the 12th.
Okay, so a motion to carry?
Well, I mean, before we make the motion, are you looking to book?
Yeah, you can book it, you could.
All right.
Put it over that date, and we'll extend to that date.
So we are looking for also the November, Thursday, November the 7th, and an extension of time till Mr. Giannetti, at least the 30th of November. That's, by the way, assuming the expert witnesses are available. I remind that this also requires the objectors' experts to be available. Dr. Emerson has indicated he is, in case he's finished on the 12th. Somebody's going to have an expert. And the same thing for November the 7th, in case we're. Well, I'm just saying, keep it keep it in mind when we. Extinction to November the 30th, Mr. Giannetti?
Yes.
Thank you. So the motion is now to continue this meeting till Thursday, September the 12, 2024, at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. It shall also be scheduled without further notice for both the 12th of September and the 7th of November, which is also a Thursday at 7:00 PM or soon thereafter, as the matter may be heard. And the applicant will grant an extension for time of decision till November 30, 2024.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Any roll call?
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Schobbo?
Yes.
Yes.
Minimum of the pony?
Yes.
Mr. Garelli?
Yes.
Yes.
One more matter, Mr. Chairman, before the adjournment, and you go off on summer vacation. Motion to cancel the July 25 meeting, business meeting.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second Ron's motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
With that, Mr. Chairman, the next meeting of this board shall be Thursday, September 5, 2024, and you do have at least one, I did not more, applications on that night.
Okay, great. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Enjoy the rest of your summer.